So it's actually three oh one, but we'll go with that one, three oh four. Invocation will give it to us by Councilmember Thompson, and then we'll start it. Anybody wishing to join us for a moment, a prayer can do so by standing up.
Join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, watch over these proceedings today and guide us as we make the decisions for all the people of Odessa. Help us have a lively debate. Be kind. Lord, I pray today that you be with that poor family in Houston who lost that little girl. It's close to our heart, and there's nothing like losing a child. So just be with them and be with us, and remember that what we do here today is important, but not in things like that. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
May be seated. Thank you for that. That's good. First item, item three, to discuss extending a T-Ball field to Jim Parker, Andrew Frye. Is he here? He did say he was coming, right?
Yes, I spoke to him this morning.
Okay, we'll go ahead and just move on to item four, and if he arrives, we'll circle back. Item four, update on Seal Coat Project. Mr. Goff?
Hello.
How are you doing, sir? Go ahead.
Oh, um, we, uh, on Wednesday, we finished the-
Is it on?
Hello?
There you go.
On Wednesday, we finished Seal Coat, the overall rock laying, and then today, we got some good news that our striping is completed. So the next couple of months or so, we'll be laying back out the stop bars, crosswalks, schools online, stuff like that.
On the crosswalks and all that, so those, basically, you're not painting on, those are like a-
Those are heat applied, thermal.
Heat applied, that's what.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's not paint?
Stop bars. For, stop bars for like, when you stop at the red lights, the little lines.
They're like strips.
The strips.
Yeah.
And then the arrows, and so we'll, we'll start getting back on it pretty hard.
About how much did you wind up doing? Is it a couple of miles? What did we wind up doing?
I had to do about twenty-three miles.
Twenty-three miles? And we did that in?
And we-
They brought two crews in, so that's why we were in.
And so, am I the only one that heard that nobody could see no lines at night?
No, yeah. I'm the only two.
One of the reasons that I, I wanted this on the agenda is just so we could let the people know the process. I mean, they're asking, what's the importance of it? Why aren't there any lines? They wanted it done at the same time they were laying down the rock. That's, that, that, that can't happen that way. It's a process.
Yes, sir. We need three to five days to cure.
What was it done at night? And, but, you know, we get these kind of questions, and we know the answers to them. And we do go out there, and we try to get that information out there, but I just figured this would be a good opportunity for you to lay everything out and let people know why we did what, why we've done the way it was done.
Yes, it takes three to five days for the rock to cure, so if we're out striping, you know, they have the little rocks in the middle. If we stripe it, the rocks will be loose. We have yellow rocks everywhere. So we let it compact, and then come back in three days, and-
We let the cars do that for us?
Yes, sir.
Why do we do it in the summer? Spring and summer?
Uh, the heat.
Which, so, what's the ample, uh, uh, temperature to do this?
Uh, I believe it's seventy-four to eighty degrees.
Because also, the striping has to be above forty degrees, isn't it?
The striping has to be above sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
If not, we'll have tracking all over the place.
So the question that we wind up getting, why is it being done only in summer and not when it's slower? Well, because it's, it's the heat generation.
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, and we get a better job in the summer. We need the heat-
Yeah.
-for, to do the project.
And then, the other one was the striping. Why do, you know, why did we do that? And well, you know, we, the striping had been a problem for quite some time. This is going back in twenty-twenty.
Yes, sir.
And we hadn't seen any type of striping on our major thoroughfare since twenty-twenty.
Yes.
And so, uh, lack of paint, I know you were working on it, you did some of it, and so, and then we did the, uh, we did that. We hadn't done the, uh, the other one was, it was one that I got, that I've lived here for twenty-eight years, and I've never seen anybody ever do this. It's called the Annual Seal Coat Project. Hence, annual, which is done every year. Everybody that's been in Odessa for any given time knows that we do this every year.
Yes, sir.
And so, then we get the, uh, the chips, the chips on the windows, and then the, uh, how to remove the tar.
Right.
Tar remover. Uh, but twenty-three miles, we did twenty-three miles in three to five days? Is that what you said?
Yep.
In one week.
Oh, we got pictures.
So, I think this is eligible. Um, Granby, we did all the way up and down, down in Neighbors, eighty-seven, Eighth Street was one of the major we did. This year, we concentrated on the major-
Yes, which we really sorely needed.
We stayed off the residential this year, concentrated on the majors. Rocky Lane, on the west side, East Ridge, and we did, we hit quite a few roads.
Yeah, a couple of, a couple of years ago, was a guy that was, man, he got me, and he called, he complained to me, he goes, ever since you became mayor, East Ridge is bad. I drive on East Ridge. I said, it's, you know, yeah, it's a little bumpy, but it's still good.
Yeah.
And so, um, yeah, so-
The preservation project, this will add years of life to these streets.
All right. I thought it, I mean, it was fast, quick, you know, uh, I saw some complaints on, online about, uh, traffic, traffic control.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know what happened, Forty-second and Granby is what I heard.
Granby got a little tangled up, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, people had a hard time understanding what the tabs were for.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Tucker, Mr. Goff, can you explain, or can you give the final cost for this Seal Coat Project versus paving the amount of streets, the amount of miles that we, that would have, just the cost comparison?
We did this job for about two-point-eight million.
Okay.
Twenty-three miles.
And the twenty each to thirty million, that we, we budgeted three million for the project, we, we got these done for about two-point-eight.
That's good. Are you through for the year? Are you through for the summer?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, let's just finish as our Seal Coat Project.
That's a point to make. It was inconvenient. I had a hard time getting to my house one day, but note, one day.
Exactly one day.
I had trouble getting to my house.
Well, the overall project took seven, took a week.
Yes.
Most people, most roads only took one day to complete, so I mean, it's-
That's right.
Those guys were moving fast.
They brought in a second crew, and, and they did a real good job.
We couldn't keep up, so.
Joseph, we wind up putting in a preliminary, uh, schedule and map for the community, saying, hey, you know, I mean, ahead of time.
Yes.
We put it on our website, we sent it out, sent it out to the media and said, hey, this is, this is what's gonna happen. Be aware that these streets are gonna be done. So it wasn't like we just spring it up on that surprise, right?
That's right.
And all you had to do was just avoid the, uh, the area. That's nice, so.
What I like about the project is the new rock you're using, it's coated, because I'm kinda picky about my car, and I don't see, I haven't seen any rocks, or oil, or anything else, so.
There's still, you still see low rock in the gutters, but-
Yeah, not much.
-we'll clean that up with the street sweeper, and, you know, it'll, it'll-
There's some left in the major intersections, too. Lots and lots of rocks. That's where all the damage is coming from. Everybody flies across there, slings them up to the guy behind them.
Are those black, um, navigation tabs, or they install within twenty-four hours? They're pretty quick?
Um, we, since we're shorthanded, we, uh, started three weeks ahead of time, and we walked every, every lane down and back, and got around-
You know, I actually look for them.
Yes, sir.
I look for them. Can they be made in white, something that's highly visible?
We have white and yellow. And reflectors on-
I'm just seeing dark colors while I'm driving.
Yes, sir.
That's just eyesight. My eyesight.
They, they all went down before we sealed it. So, once they seal coated, they were there.
Yeah, I noticed that on Granby when I get out at four in the morning, I looked at it, and I saw all the tabs, and I was like, oh, we're gonna start to coating.
Yes, sir.
And so, yeah, well, you know, uh, there's always gonna be someone making a complaint. But it was, it was a good job, fast, quick, uh, you know, man, Granby looks a lot wider.
Thank you.
And it looks good. Everything looked good. It turned out great, so. Any other comments on this? Gentlemen, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We're gonna move on to item five, discuss the issuance of request for qualifications, RFQ. Mr. Niles?
And Council, this is where we discussed in length with Christine at the last work session, and they did the research, they went in, they made sure that all of the acronyms, and I'm not gonna be able to tell you what they are, because I don't know. But they actually found another one that seemed, uh, another agency that seemed, uh, accrediting agency that seemed pertinent and added it, so Mr. Niles is gonna present this RFQ now. They've done the work, it's, it's a good RFQ. Okay.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Beckmeyer, Council Mayor. So, and, uh, the Council was presented with the RFQ for the design and implementation of the Bob Darrington Plant. At that time, Council had talked about, and there was some additional language required for specific accreditations for prospective bidders. Therefore, we did add, in section one-point-one, program benefits guarantee, we did include International Performance Measure Verification Protocol. And then in section one-point-four, bidders must be accredited by the National Association of Energy Service Companies, energy service providers as an energy service company, uh, energy service provider as an energy efficient contractor, and provide proof of those certifications. Only qualified performance-based contractors will, with a minimum of three years comprehensive performance-based contracts for wastewater plant improvements will be considered. Uh, and then, just adding these accreditations speaks to quality assurance, compliance, risk management, competitiveness, and trust and reputation.
The other thing it does is these type of companies, when they come in, just like PSI did with our waste, with our water meters, they bring in financial solutions with them.
Council, any questions? Anything else that we need to add, that we know of?
It's gonna be interesting to see what financial solutions are.
Expensive.
Yeah, I know that.
If no other questions, uh, any last discussions? If not, we'll go ahead and move on. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to item six, discuss the bid for asbestos removal demolition for Shredder Building. Mr. Rodriguez?
Afternoon, Mayor. Council?
Good afternoon, sir.
Jayden is gonna be passing on an area review of the Shredder Plant.
Mr. Rodriguez, how many, how much square footage is that, that we're looking at?
Uh, it's over two-thousand square footage, about twenty-four-hundred square footage.
Twenty-four-hundred?
Yes, sir.
They'll take pictures, they'll come down, start history.
You miss that building, aren't you? Especially in the winter? I've seen it.
So you've seen-
I would not, I would not go inside of it.
Yes, sir.
Is, is, is the trash all picked up?
Well, we have some recycles in there.
Still?
Yeah, yeah, but, I mean, that's easy to get removed, no problem.
I'll go with the demolition?
Yes. But here to discuss the, uh, awarding the bid to Midwest Wrecking Company of Texas for asbestos removal, demolition, and removal of the Shredder Building, located at eleven-hundred West Forty-second Street, which is located between the Park Sideways Admin Offices and Animal Control. Uh, the contractor will also compact level area, furnish, the finished grade must be of surrounding area. The cost of this demolition will be at a cost of thirty, eighty-three thousand five-hundred, and it's within budget of the line item. Uh, the bidding process included four vendors, uh, in Midwest Wrecking came in with the lowest bid. Vanco bided, Hasty Construction, and Veit National Corporation also placed bid on it. Uh, the removal is to make room for parking for Sideways Equipment and to build a new Sideways Building in the future, uh, on the south end of the Sideways Yard. The Shredder Plant is approximately twenty-four thousand square feet, and it was built in nineteen-seventy-three. Uh, it was, uh, known as a shredder plant, because that's where the trucks would go and back in, and unload the trash, and then it would get shredded. There were some machines about twelve feet underground, there's a large pit. Uh, it was later covered and compacted, and then later on, it was used as a recycle facility, and that's when butts recycling was in, and, uh, they were there over twenty years. And so, once we stopped, uh, once we did not renew the contract, that's when we started looking into, uh, demolishing this building. Uh, the, uh, the pavement, it's caved in, it, it's pretty bad. And the roof leaks when it rains, when it rains, right? It's like Niagara Falls here, but, uh, it, it's, it's in bad, bad, uh, bad shape. So it, in my opinion, it needs to be demolished and removed.
So, we got two prices here, demolition with slab and without slab. You're doing the slab, slab going too?
Yes, sir. And, and we are keeping the metal as well.
Let me, here's another question I'm gonna ask, and the reason why I asked the square footage, the, the abatement's eighty-three thousand per, how much, how much square footage is being abated? Do you have that?
No, sir.
Okay.
It's gonna be for the whole, for the whole-
So we're doing floor tile, surfacing thermal window units, roofing material, and then dump demolition. Reason why I ask is that we wind up seeing on the, uh, Station Six, which is a smaller footprint, the asbestos was in the, in the tile, in the glue, and with those buildings. And I think when we had the city making assessment of the abatement, we're like, three-hundred-thousand? And I was like, and, and so private, where everybody came in with thirty-six, under forty-thousand. And I was just trying to amaze them, and when I saw the eighty-three, I was kinda surprised.
Right. Well, it, the only tile I see is barely the break, there's a break room on, there's, it's a two-story building.
Yeah.
Uh, that's probably the only tile that I, that I can-
It's minimal.
Yeah. It's minimal, very minimal.
And I thought Station Six was minimal, but I still couldn't fathom three-hundred-thousand dollars worth of, uh, in, in, in bid. I just, I just didn't see it.
Yes.
I mean, I understand it would have been the whole building, but this was just the tile, and I haven't been in that building, so I just didn't know how much square footage.
Yeah.
I, I'm telling you, I was, uh, I was really shocked at the price, and I thought it's a, it's a good price, and so, for as much as-
As a matter of fact, this company's doing three projects for the C-5 building right now.
Yeah. Yeah, I saw that. I saw that.
Mr. Rodriguez, what was the difference, uh, from the low bidder to the high bidder?
The highest bidder was two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-five. Uh, the second came in, Vanco, at two-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand.
Jump on the price before somebody changes their mind.
It just always makes me wonder why they can be that much lower.
Right.
It always scares me.
Started questioning that myself.
And what kind of answers you get?
You know, and the gentleman knows that, and, and, but I informed him right away, we're gonna keep the metal. I figured them keeping the metal, you know, would reduce the price, but since we're keeping the metal for recycling ourselves, you know.
You can sell it?
Mm.
I guess one of the good things about it is they are doing three jobs currently in Midland, you said, right?
Yes, sir, and they've done already one last year off of Lorraine Street. I just can't tell you which building they, they took care of over there, so. I'm thinking the, their equipment's already in town, it's already nearby, they don't have to haul the equipment, because they're out of Fort Worth.
Okay, so.
The timeframe, timeframe, about three to four weeks, sir.
All right. Getting closer.
Yes, sir.
Another step. So, all right. Any other further questions? Thank you very much. Thank you for staying on this.
All right, thank you.
Move on to item seven, discuss the, uh, the acceptance of the future development Park Site Desert Ridge subdivision. Councilmember Swanner?
Yep. This is the Desert Ridge Park. This is the Desert Ridge Park that we've been working on for several months, or let's say, almost two years now, and we're ready, um, for us to accept that land. Larry Lee with LeCo Properties will be here on July ninth, if y'all are in agreement that we're ready to accept that park.
They need it.
And open it up.
Council, any questions on the?
It's a three-point-eight-five acre park. It's a neighborhood park.
And is it my recollection that Mr. Lee, um, donated the cost of make, building that park?
So the Parks Foundation did the equipment, and then Larry Lee did the rest.
I'd like to publicly thank Mr. Lee. That's great.
It looks good.
The, the holdup right now is the grass, we're waiting on sod to be put in, and once that's done, it'll be ready to go. Has a dog park, a walking area. It'll be a really nice park. It's a good partnership.
Great.
Those are beautiful homes in that area, but they don't have a lot of backyard, you know, the dogs can run.
And the residents are ready for it to be open, so.
Kids can play. I love it.
So, are we, uh, legally, are we legally signing, uh, acceptance of donation upon completion of the park?
We are.
And then at that time, it becomes full responsibility with the Parks Department?
Yes. Yeah, he's gonna quit claiming, in fact, we already have the deed signed, we're just waiting on y'all to formally accept it.
All equipment that's installed becomes city property?
Everything.
Okay. So it's just standard contract that we've had in the past?
Whatever interest he has in that piece of land right now will become the city's.
So, did Larry, did Mr. Lee, why put in the picnic pavilions without, from the, from the foundation?
Yes.
Sidewalk?
Yes.
Trail fence and irrigation system, turf spring landscaping, that all came from?
Yes.
Combination of, uh-
The city provided some of the landscaping.
Okay. All right. Any other further questions? Everybody look over the notes on the, uh, the advisory, advisory board? That was back in, uh, January twenty-three?
They won it.
Okay. No further questions? We're good? Consensus moving forward for July?
Yes.
All right. One step closer. Uh, item eight, discussing Minion City Charter, Section forty-six F, by defining council member prohibiting the person as served, mayor and serving, council member. Uh, Council, have you overseen the, uh, recommendations from the last time we spoke? We have, uh, proposition one, amend section forty-six F of the charter by adding subsections as follows. Term limits, uh, item F, everything that's in red is, what, what, is it, is in existence right now?
Right. What is struck out, term limits, a person shall not serve, that is struck out, so that will, that's in existence right now. And then what it will actually be is a person that has served as council member is eligible to serve as mayor. However, a person that has served as mayor is ineligible to then serve as a council member. And this was option two B, that the consensus was to go forward with.
Which, which is proposition two or three?
Uh, it is, I believe, I believe it is proposition, well, prop, well-
Two B, right?
Yeah, I believe it is. It's two B. Yep. Which would be proposition two.
A person that has served as council member is ineligible to serve as mayor, however, a person that has served as mayor is ineligible to then serve as a council member. The ballot shall read as follows. For, uh, so you're voting for, establish that a person who serves as mayor of the city of Odessa may not even serve as a council member. Against, establish that a person who serves as mayor of the city of Odessa may not serve as a council member. Does that make sense?
I think it's gonna cause a lot of confusion.
That's what I'm, I'm confused. I wrote that, yeah. That's why I'm asking, so, uh, yeah, I'm, 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 so, the word established, why are we using where established?
Well, that's standard language legally, that you would say that, okay, we're gonna establish that this is, this is the new rule, this is the new rule that we're following, that whoever the person is, they serve as mayor, uh, then they cannot step down as, to be a city council member. Does that make any, it's, it's just legalese, but we can clean it up to make it better.
Well, the reason why I'm saying this, 'cause you're sitting in the ballot, and a lot of people don't have a tendency, 'cause it's like reading a proposition.
Right.
So, every primary, you have all these number of propositions, and people get really confused with the language in the proposition. So I always tell someone, when you're gonna read them, read them for or against. And so, read it for, establish a person who serves as mayor of the city of Odessa may not then serve as a council member. I'm against the establishing that a person who serves as a mayor of the city of Odessa may not serve as a council member. That's how I tell them to read it. Read it more than-
For.
-one or two times.
Yeah.
Uh, that way you get a better understanding, because in language now, uh, they have seen in propositions, for is actually being against, and against actually means being for. We've seen things written that way.
This, this coming November twenty-second, I will have been on this council for two years, and so, my limited experience and background, uh, in this matter is this, um, has there been something that has happened in the past that has caused us to get now into a discussion of?
Yes.
Will someone share it with me?
Yeah, so in the la, in, in twenty-twenty, we had a, uh, mayor, at that time, who for eight years said he wasn't gonna run, and then decided to run in the at-large. So you went from mayor and went down to an at-large.
Okay.
And so, there was confusion, uh, you know, can you do that? And, 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 then, when I, uh, when I basically sat there, and I can't remember what, what year is it that we expand, the council, expanded the, uh, city council?
I think it was eighteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Sat right there and made a, a plea to the council not to expand government, 'cause it wasn't only expanding city council, expanding every board. Everything was expanded except for the ODC, which was incorrect information, because then the lawyer said that that could not be expanded, which was not true. And then, how, how all that was done, but I digress on that.
When you say the lawyer, do you mean our, our own city council?
No, no, at that time, at that time, the, the in-house lawyer was, uh, was not an employee of the city. It was being contracted.
It was interim, interim.
It was interim out of San Angelo, uh, Landers?
Yeah.
Gary Landers.
Larry, Larry Landers, is that it was?
Gary.
Gary Landers. So, there was, um, so the thing is, is that I then made a plea saying that it's a, it's a possibility that you can run for city council, and run for mayor, or you can run for district at-large and mayor. And then I was then said, 'cause I didn't read, when I read this, the existing, that's not how I read it, that you're basically regulated to sixteen years. And so, um, so the, the question then, there was a lot of discussion in twenty-twenty, is that, once you run for mayor, so what was the purpose of then staying on the council and being for mayor? It wasn't for a voting block. There was a lot of discussion going about that this is a voting block, this is a voting block, and that was established prior to, before the council was expanded from five votes to seven. There was a lot of rhetoric out in the community about a voting block and voting block. There was a lot of rhetoric out in the community about a voting block and voting block. In fact, there was a petition that was put together in the community and it was described because it was put out in businesses, it went out to the schools, they were hitting people, they were hitting people in lines at the schools as they were picking up kids, and they're having everybody sign this petition. And they're basically saying this is against the voting block. There's a voting block. And the discussion, the counter discussion was, well, it's a voting block, but it's also called the majority. And so, there was a lot of pushback on that. And the voting block at then was council member from five, four and one. And so, got very heated and so, there was a lot of, and so, that's where the expansion of the council came in. And then you went from bought back the at-large, because the at-large was actually in existence, but it was taken away when the, when the school district went into, segregated. So, in eighty-two, the school district, you know, segregated, split the town in half. So, the council then was proactive in eliminating the at-large and creating a District Five, which created a majority, minority, majority in District Five that served the, the community for twenty years. But then it was, then decided to add the at-large and I made a plea about, hey, this could wind up having, you could wind up having one person or a majority of, using the words of those that were proactive on the, on the, on the petition, you could create a voting block all out in one district and in Midland County. And so, because remember, City of Midland, City of Odessa is in Midland County. So, there was a lot of back and forth, but in the end, I was motivated by the fact is that once you achieve mayor, what's, what is the motivation to continue to serve on council as a council member? I can see council member at-large moving up, but what's the motivation? Once you hit, you've sat at the highest seat in, in city government to go down, other than maintain a majority?
I agree.
That was, that was, that was the premise, you know, and that's just me.
No, I appreciate that historical information because again, I'll be honest with you, this is the last meeting, I got to thinking, what's behind this? I, I don't know. So, you're giving me some, a picture of understanding. Now, does the, do our constituents, the citizens of Odessa eventually have a vote on this?
Yes, that's what we're discussing.
This, this, this is not for us to decide. I mean, well, guess what? Our responsibility is, is, is.
Put it out there.
Is, we can either move it forward with the consensus and vote on it and vote to put it on the ballot for the citizens to, to consider it, or we vote it down and we don't consider it.
Okay.
So, that's, you know, what I'm trying to do is narrow it down to something, you know, we have a consensus, what we can agree on, then we'll have to put it on the council meeting, then we have to discuss it and vote on it.
Okay.
And you can either vote for or against it.
Very good.
Okay?
Thank you so much, Russ.
But in the whole process, the mayor got a vote too. The mayor, didn't you give a vote?
I'm sorry?
No, yeah. Only in case of a tie.
Yeah.
So, all of that changed then?
Which was, which was rare because you had five votes.
Yeah, but it happened.
But, did it?
Well, somebody was absent or.
I don't know if it ever did happen.
I don't know.
It happened when the council member was absent.
Yeah, okay.
I thought it probably did.
I think the wordage on that proposition title too is critical.
Also, didn't have to remember all that.
So, if we're looking at Proposition Two?
And now, understand now, when we talk about Proposition One, Two, Three, these are, these are three different things that the citizens will vote on. The first proposition is just defining what a city council member is.
Right.
And then, then you go to Proposition Two, you're dealing with the mayor, because the mayor can't go back and run for city council.
They have to read all of them.
And then, of course, the third proposition, of course, is the actual term limits. Does this count before twenty twenty-four or does it count from twenty twenty-four forward like it did in two thousand three, I believe, two thousand two?
And the fourth one is just about the election date?
And oddly enough, I'm actually, we're actually doing some research now on the day of the election, that may be a clerical era, so when we come back in a couple of weeks, that may not even be on here.
You're talking about Proposition Four, date of the election?
Yes. So, because it was changed here, what, three, four years ago, five years ago, six years ago, and it never made it on. It's just like, we discovered here, what, a couple of months ago, that the city attorney used to sit here and read out in the open all the ordinances that had just passed. Well, that was messed up in two thousand one, two thousand two, and another case of I'm licking the cap over again because that was a clerical thing that should have been taken care of twenty plus years ago, for lack of a better word.
Yeah, so, every ordinances was read by John?
Yep, 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 yep. And so, but that was taken away twenty plus years ago and now, we, we dealt with it in a clerical era, so, anyway. Sometimes I shake my head, disbelief.
Counselor, what kind of a mess we're gonna get into is if part of these pass and part of them fail, then what?
Then, well, and there you go.
My question to the.
That, that's, that's why we chose to, to break them out because, okay, it's, this is y'all's decision, okay? You can have proposition all together or the way we have it here, one, two, three, four, okay? And some may pass, some may not. And that's just it, but this is about giving the citizens an opportunity to decide.
So, on?
And not make it an all or nothing kind of thing, you know, where they can actually say, well, this one goes and this one fails.
So, on Proposition One?
It's just a definition.
Okay.
Of a, of a council member.
That's already in place right now. Proposition One? I mean, basically, it's just, it's basically stating that council member means a single member district council member.
So, if, if y'all will, if y'all will remember, here a few months ago, we talked about, okay, councilman, we, I think we discussed in one of the emails I sent y'all with like Councilman Connell, he's over District Four now. Well, eight years. Well, can he turn around and then run for councilman at large? No, he can't. It was just still six, sixteen years. But what had happened is that we had misconstrued that it was twenty-four years.
I did, yes.
That you remember, you could actually, you could actually work your way up from four to at-large and then mayor, it's been twenty, well, you can't do that. So, what we're just trying to do is just try to define council member means one, two, three, four, five and at-large. That's all we're doing.
So, just cleaning up the language?
Just cleaning it up.
What would happen as Councilman Thompson was saying, this Proposition One fails?
Well.
So, how, how are we defined? How are council members defined?
Then it's still just, there you go. I mean, it fails and then it's just a council member, you know, but it's not, it's not precise. I mean, the, the, the thing about doing this is that this could go either way.
Yeah.
This, this could be really a good thing or really a bad thing, depending on how the voters take.
Then, then what we do, just leave it like it is?
Well, and if they vote it down, then you're gonna have to leave it like it is. But if they vote for, let's say they vote for one, let's say they define, okay, they like Proposition One, we know a council member is one, two, three, four, five, and at large, they like it. What happens if they turn around and say, no, the mayor, we think the mayor ought to be able to turn around and run for, for two or three or whatever? You see what I'm saying? It could be a mess. We could be opening up Pandora's Box.
We already have Pandora's Box.
Yeah.
You're, you're, you're making us, it's basically saying, hey, we got everything tightened up. No, we don't.
Well.
You know, and, and, because we have, we have so many half measures and all the ordinances and zonings that, I mean, it's, it's, I mean, that rulebook is about this thing.
So.
Well, why don't we, why would we break them down in separate propositions and not do one proposition for or against?
I prefer combined.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's an option, that we could put one, two, three, four all together, yes or no?
Well, four, four's still debatable, it might disappear.
It's probably gonna drop out because it's just clerical. But like I say, y'all tell me what y'all want to do, we can do it.
I guess I opened up Pandora's Box again.
That's okay.
No, 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 it's, it's, it's.
I need it, I need it to know what's going on, I, yeah, okay.
I mean, if we could just combine two and three, that's really the, the crux of this whole deal.
Could you, could you work that language and bring it back?
We're good.
And then, then we'll go from there. I think we'll have a clearer picture if this council wants to.
That would make more sense to the voters, I, I would think.
You wanna combine two and three? And y'all wanna leave number one out?
Yes.
I'm trying to find that we're talking about, Section One.
Right there.
Counsel, this is a process. This is why we're doing this in front of God and everybody, because we want the voters to see, we want the citizens to see what we're doing here, because this is a process. It's not something, it's not like Bewitched where you can twinkle your nose and make it all just perfect. It, it's a process.
Yeah, because with Proposition One, if it fails, then we're back to the way we are right now.
Right. Which is the, the one in the red?
Right.
The term limits shall not serve as council.
Yep.
Well, it basically leaves the term limits at sixteen years, is what happens.
Yep.
Which is fine, I mean, the sixteen years is fine. I don't think anybody had an issue with the sixteen years.
No. I mean, and it's a possibility.
I mean, it was clarified to us it wasn't twenty-four, that this actually means sixteen.
And mayor, it's a possibility that you tell me, we're gonna leave one, Proposition One as is with the term limits and, but go combine two and three.
Yeah. So, I mean, I'm fine, I mean, I don't think, I don't think any of it, I know I don't have any issue with, you know, once it was clarified how it read, there was sixteen years, I said, okay. You know, once again, it's how you read it. It's like reading the same scripture and you walk away with two different understandings.
It is.
I'm fine with combining two and, two and three and see how that reads.
Yeah.
And leaving one out and leaving it as is, and then we'll get further.
Circumference.
Where you guys are at on four.
Go do that.
Because I mean that.
As a practical matter, you know, the citizens have already voted what we've got in. They thought that was okay, so that's why we have it.
Right.
So, we as a counselor saying, here's a problem with that, maybe.
The thing is because we were under pressure that there was, there were twenty-four years that could possibly be, but now, you know, they can't.
No, it's just sixteen.
I don't think we need, I don't think we need.
And that's, that's, that's why I'm wondering if we even need to address this. I, I, I don't know. Doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but.
Well, I mean, I, I thought, I thought it was pretty clear about, you know, the, the, what I had addressed was a person that serves as mayor and with the optics of dropping down to at-large.
That needs to be addressed. It needs to be addressed.
You know, I, I expressed it even back in eighteen and I've been consistent since that time. I was consistent during the election, I've been consistent as the mayor. Once you're achieved, it's like, hey, I run for president, now that I'm doing that, it goes, then I'm gonna get, now that I'm out as president and I, and my term limits are out, but I'm gonna come back as a VP. Wait a minute, you just served in the highest, you know, office in the land, why would you wanna do that?
It doesn't work in the corporations and it doesn't work in the United States military.
You know, and, and, you know, this is not pointing at anything else other than the optics going forward. There's a spirit of, of term limits, but it's hard to think of everything and there always seems to be kind of a little loophole. I mean, and honestly, when it comes to term limits, I've always said elections are basically term limits, you know, that's the way, you know, that's basically it. That's something I've always preached about.
That's true.
But since, you know, the council, which, what year was it that all this was put in place as far as the term limits, when the, the discussion then ultimately came up with these? I mean, was, it was two thousand three?
It was two thousand and three, discussion two thousand and two.
Because in there, there was no term limits, but you're running every two years and they were still staggered.
Yes.
And then, two thousand three, it was made the decision to go every, you know, two terms, four years.
Four years.
And so, I'm sure there was a big discussion about that and the term limits were very popular, but I didn't live here at the time when I came back. I did address it and I, you know, basically made that plea of saying, can you serve twenty-four hours? Nobody pushed back and saying that I was incorrect until we started going into this saying, well, this is how it reads and.
So, twenty-one years ago, what's now in place was what the citizens voted for?
Well, yeah, they put it on the ballot.